The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
I'd like to call the board meeting to order. We have seven members, seven board members present today. We're also joined at the table to my left, Dr. Langenfeld, our superintendent. We have two interested student council members, our outgoing president, Lo King Cheng, and our incoming president, Lu Li Martinez Cruz. Lu is from East High School. And then also at the table are members of the superintendent's cabinet and our board assistant, Sandy Heller. First, we start with our public forum. This is a time for members of the community to speak before the board on any issue of concern. And I do not have anyone that's filled out a form today, but is there anyone who would like to speak before the board? Seeing none, we will move to our agenda. First is the Teaching and Learning Work Session. That will be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We have four discussion items. The first, the John Dewey Academy of Learning Charter School Contract Review. And I think Mark Smith is running chairs. Molly O'Neill.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board of Education and also our community. This evening, you will hear from the staff, in particular Molly O'Neill, at John Dewey Academy. I'll provide a bit of the context as to the purpose of her presentation, and that was stated in the memo that was put out as well. The Board of Education reviewed the first initial program evaluation that was conducted by Gwynne Framp, our Director of Research and Evaluation. And we did that in a board retreat, and part of that was to provide an overview of a self-study that was conducted by John Dewey Academy of Learning and their staff, and then also Gwynne's internal research and evaluation as well. How that concluded was providing, and this is all part of the contract, providing Molly and the staff an opportunity to respond to some of those initial program elements. And so the presentation that you have today in the narrative memo is set up from that standpoint, where you see the initial rating, for lack of a better term, or the initial indicator, and then John Dewey's response and the staff's response to those particular areas. So this is, there's no governance request for this. It's simply an opportunity for Molly and her staff to respond to a few of those elements. And please recognize that there's an ongoing element of this review and culminating in the Board of Education's recommitment, if they choose to fulfill and renew the contract for John Dewey. And that will come at or before the end of the fifth academic year. And we'll get into when that is in our calendar sequence. So at this point, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Molly, who is the Coordinator of Charter Schools and has been the lead advisor at John Dewey Academy of Learning.
All right. Hello. So I'm gonna kind of just take you through the document that I created as a response to some of the areas of concern that Gwynne had brought forth at the previous meeting where she shared it. As I go through it, feel free to interrupt and ask questions. You don't necessarily have to wait until the end. We can kind of go through it together. So the first one that she really talked about was the mission, the rigorous project-based learning. Some of her concerns, obviously, as you can see, was just seeking assistance from some other resources within and outside of the district. One of the main things I want to touch on was, or is, the updating of our rubrics. So one of the huge issues that we've really determined over the course of the last few years is that the rubrics that we've been using are not really, they don't do what the students do justice. So the learning that is done, the demonstration of the learning that is done, the depth of learning that is completed by our students is not represented in the rubrics that we have been addressing, that we have been using during our assessments. And so what we've really been doing is looking at what are going to be some better rubrics for this. So this year, we went ahead and we started creating new project-based learning or project rubrics. We've been looking at new writing rubrics, new rubrics for various end products that our students create, as well as new rubrics for the literacy program that we use. So some of the assistance I've seeked with that is just kind of having conversations with Mr. Mike Freeze on what would be some good ways to implement some of the common core standards, and how can we kind of use those to really address the learning that's being accomplished? And that's been the route that we've taken. So we're aligning that common core with the projects and the learning that's being accomplished in our school, and then creating the rubrics out of that. The other area that I wanted to address was just the connection to other charters. So another way that we've been kind of seeking assistance for really figuring out how we can best continue to move our projects forward is by, I've been making new contacts with other charters within the state that focus on project-based learning, blended learning, as well as online learning. And that's been actually very informative for where we're at, because there's a lot of schools out there that now have gone through the first four years, and they're continuing. And so that's really what we're looking at is, all right, we've made it to year four, which is fantastic, and we're doing great. But now we really want to up our game and see, you know, what we can learn from those schools that have just done that. So that's another area that I wanted to address. We have hired a new language arts teacher for next year, so we'll have another advisor that has that language arts background, which we could not be more thrilled for. We were very excited for, one, the person that we've selected, and, two, to have someone with that background, because we do have that need. We are more than aware of the fact that we have that need, and we're excited to address that need and really utilize her expertise to, once again, bring our writing forward, bring more of that research forward, and addressing some of those other areas of concern with the rigor.
Just to add to that, if you recall, that was an area that Gwynne talked about in terms of the teacher certification and just the balancing of Molly's social studies background, Jonathan Egan is math, Mike Chilson is science. And so to be able to create a kind of more comprehensive team in the ELA teacher was recommended, and the student population at John Dewey has increased enough to be able to justify that from a staffing standpoint. So just, don't quote me on that, but just going from about 60 to 80-plus kids also indicates a need from a staffing standpoint. So it's really nice to be able to capitalize. Yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, to just kind of wrap up that section, we're just, I'm really happy that with these new rubrics and just kind of the implementation of the new rubrics, our students and our staff, which is going to be key, everyone is going to be on the same page with understanding what we're looking for in the learning that our students are doing. And so once those get implemented, we're going to be able to have everyone on the same page, so really those common assessments, as well as then making sure that everyone's aware of where we're expecting them to get to. And that's going to be really huge for increasing our rigor. So any questions about that area? Okay. The next one was, technology-rich environment was the next area of concern. There was discussion about the minis, the netbooks that our students use, and the amount of work that they spend on those minis, or the amount of time that they spend on those minis and all the work that they do complete on those minis. And it is quite amazing, the work that they complete on those minis. So it's really fun to see how really creative they've gotten with them. However, we've been working really closely with our technology integration specialist, Jonathan Spike, as well as, you know, he's then been working with, you know, Diane, on what we can do for next year. And we're in talks about getting Lenovo's for our students for next year to replace those minis. So that's, that too is very exciting.
Diane, not to put you on the spot, what's the difference in screen size? I think that was one of the pieces, because the kids work so intimately with that. What is the difference in screen size?
Well, they can be anywhere from 11 to 13 inches. These are much smaller than that.
This is the mini.
Yes. That is the mini. So the next one was adequate progress. Some of the concerns there were, again, the rubric, which I've already discussed, as well as closer monitoring of students being on track, and then kind of establishing whether a grade 12 student could enter. So to kind of go through that section, one of the big things that we're going to be working on this summer is really looking at, what does tier-two, what do tier-two interventions look like in a PBL school? You know, what, how do we intervene when a student isn't doing well in project-based learning, when there's a whole gamut of reasons why they may not be doing well in project-based learning? Just like in a traditional classroom, except for they're having to create their learning. And so how do you really intervene in that type of environment, while still allowing them to design their learning as they go? And so that's an area that we're really going to be focusing on this summer. We have put in place some tier-two interventions for math. I have some ideas for what that would look like for language arts then, for our literacy program as well, which will be nice, having that ELA person to kind of brainstorm with. But then also, as a staff, we'll be looking at what that PBL tier-two looks like.
Molly, a quick question. What do you do if your students need the services of a social worker or a guidance counselor?
We have a point-two social worker and a point-two school counselor. Yep, and so they work on shifted, shifting schedules, I guess is how I would say that. So one's there twice a week in the morning, and the other one's there twice a week in the afternoon.
Isn't that sufficient?
It is. It is.
She's being humble. One of the unique things about John Dewey is that their advisors are not your traditional classroom teacher. They're everything to the kids. And not to replace any social workers or counselors by any stretch of the imagination. But they do have to act in a variety of ways to meet the needs of the kids, because typically, they are the first ones that the kids go to, which is a huge asset of that learning community. And yet they work really nicely with, from an outsider's perspective, the social workers and the counselors that are there, because they have to share a lot of that throughout the day or throughout the week or month.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
Brenda. For these purposes, we just ask your questions. We don't have to stand on formality.
I know you're working on creating the tier-two interventions, but can you give any kind of sense of generally what you're thinking those would be like? I mean, is it classroom teaching? You know, because it's obviously a very non-traditional learning environment. I'm just wondering if your tier-two interventions are traditional or non-traditional?
Yeah. Non-traditional, I guess. I think anytime I'm involved in the brainstorming, it's probably non-traditional. But I would say, one of the things that we're going to be looking at, too, got really excited there. One of the things we're going to be looking at, too, is creating a scope and sequence for the eighth-grade students that come in, so that they're better, they're better aware of what the expectations are, too, as they're moving through project-based learning. And then with that, having more teacher-directed projects at the same time, so that then when they're freshmen, it's kind of like they're getting more into it. So with that in mind, we're thinking that some of those PBL interventions is going to, are going to have more to do with, let's say, a student isn't creating questions that are either in-depth enough or allowing them to really expand their learning. Okay, so maybe you come in and do a workshop on how do you ask the right questions in an inquiry-based environment? Maybe we have students that, you know, continue to do the same end product. So you're seeing students continuously using Prezi or continuously using Google Presentations. It's like, okay, let's, let's work on a different one. Okay, so let's do a workshop then on how do you create a website? How do you create a short film? You know, like, and not a short film like maybe one of my capstone students have done this year, but just like, how do you, how do you use some of the technology that we can kind of just pull them in, give them that, and then send them on their way? So really tearing apart, tearing apart that project request proposal. Sources, too, is one. You know, our students, well, really, any student, you know, loves to just go to Wikipedia and think like, oh, Wikipedia has it all. Well, sure, but really, that's not where your research should be happening. So doing a little, you know, tier-two intervention on resources and, you know, figuring out what kind of sources should I be using? Are they credible? How would I cite them? So those are kind of just off the top of my head, figuring out how to do that.
I think the other piece, too, Molly and I had an opportunity to kind of debrief upon the year, and one of the things that we talked about was making data-informed decisions. And one of the topics that we'll report on later from our schools is data-informed decisions. And I'm going to put Molly in the spot, but I believe next year, this time, John Dewey should be able to give a presentation around data-informed decisions, because they've been creating rubrics and assessments that allow them to be able to make decisions timely, like, like on the spot. So in terms of tier-two, it might be taking what they initially presented students from a universal standpoint, but then with their creative scheduling that they have, to be able to, within that same day, create a workshop in addition to what they received to support that initial learning. And they can do that because of the flexibility within their day. Yeah. So instead of waiting, you know, every six weeks or, you know, a grading period, the more common assessments that are developed, the more specific those interventions can be in a more timely way. And then we also were talking about being able to access and use some of their existing online programs in a more in-depth tier-two way. So how can you use Alex Math and take that to a deeper level for a tier-two or a tier-three? A tier-two opportunity.
Yeah, and some of the examples I just gave are specifically with the projects with PBL. But to kind of piggyback that, the rubrics that we're creating all include some of those examples I just gave. And so it'll be very easy to track that data now, whereas before it was kind of like, well, I don't know, they're just not doing really good projects. Where do we start with that? While at the same time, moving them forward. And so now we'll actually be able to look at some rubrics that are meaningful to us, and they'll provide that. But yeah, our literacy program has tons of data, as well as our Alex Math program, so.
Well, we look forward to next year's presentation. He won't put you on the spot. We will.
I'll make a note of that.
I'd like to go back to the previous topic, which is technology. One of the things, you don't have a tech ed teacher in your group, your advisory group.
Correct.
So I'm wondering, how, how well does it work to use John?
John?
John, your tech integrator, to give students the knowledge of what's out there? Because if the advisors don't know, this is kind of for Diane, too. If the advisors don't know the tools that are out there, you know, as well as a tech ed teacher would know.
Correct.
And, and/or you're not asking John for help or something specific. It seems as if that person could be used to, to give the kids, you know, here's your window of opportunity with technology that's out there to help you in making awesome projects.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's fun, because right now, we use John kind of on a, kind of like on-call. You know, we have a student that wants to do a project, and they want their end product to be this. And we're kind of like, great, all right, John, you should come out and, you know, if you could sit with this student and kind of show. We used to have him do some Tech Bites, is what we called them. So he'd come and show. So he did like, when he was piloting Google Glass, and he did some other stuff with Google with the kids, and that was the previous year. What I'm really excited for also with this language arts person is that she was kind of the tech department's go-to in the district that she's coming from. She was the guinea pig for all new technology, like media stuff, that they wanted to be tried out in the classroom. And so she has really this great base knowledge of different types of technology that can be utilized in projects. So that's going to be huge for us, too, because she's already, she's already there. She's already getting it. And so, and she's quick to learn it and start implementing it. So it's, it'll be nice to have someone on staff in-house that can really help us all start to better understand all the different technology that we could be using.
And to proactively teach the students new platforms, new experiences.
Because I would think by teaching them what's potential, they might come up with project ideas that they wouldn't have thought of, you know, on their own.
I'd also like to throw in that the library media specialist could be a great resource as well regarding best practices, available technologies, and things like that.
Yeah, and we spoke with Vicky, who's the new, what?
Coordinator.
Like coordinator. And she said that she's going to be coming out at the beginning of next year. She offered to come out and do kind of that with the students right away, to show them all the different ways that they can be researching for their information and some of the different types of tech tools that they can be already implementing in their learning. So that's exciting.
Chris?
A couple of comments, if I may, then, question in general. I won't tell your students this, but Wikipedia. Wikipedia, thank you. Is more accurate than Encyclopedia Britannica. I certainly appreciate the audit and all of what's been done after that with the program. I realize the program, as with any new program, had some bumps and whatnot as it got going. But it's, really seems to be smoothly not very well. There seem to be any students in there that can truly benefit from this type of program, which is the important thing in my mind, not a dumping ground. So sort of for the future, you mentioned that it went from 16 to 80 students right now. And you may not have the answer to this, but I think we need to think about it. What, what is the optimum number, optimum number there? I don't want it to get so big that it loses its effectiveness. And I think we need to be thinking about that if we haven't already.
No, I think it's a great question, and we dialogued about that as well. You know, for those of you that may be watching at home and don't know, John Dewey right now is on the third floor of the St. Peter and Paul Building off of Harvey Street. And there is capacity for 100 students. Excuse me, there's, there's capacity next year for 80 students from a classroom standpoint. When you start going over 80, then it starts to become a little bit more cumbersome in terms of just being able to utilize and stay true to that learning environment. And I think that that's a great point, Dr. Wagner. That's one of the things that Molly and I talked about is, how do you, how do you still stay in the true essence of that project-based learning environment and not go too far? Because it is an intimate learning environment, and that's a draw. And that's one of the things that the advisors cherish and appreciate, so.
Brenda.
It's my recollection from a long time, four years ago, that there's a cap in the charter. And so if, if at the point in time when we make the decision to renew the charter, we could lower or raise that cap. So that will be part of your presentation to us of being.
What is the cap in the charter?
120.
120?
And I think they also have in there, correct me if I'm wrong, a recommendation of 20 per advisor.
Well, sure. The recommendation is 17 to 18. The cap is 20, no more than 20.
Close. Yeah. Yeah.
If I made to that point, that 120, I'm not sure where it came from way back when. Again, my question, I think you picked up on it, was not about physical facility. It's about the environment of this type of program, how many kids can you reasonably truly serve.
All right, some other areas under the adequate progress that I responded to. There was some question about the inquiry-guided learning. And I just kind of responded to that, that our type of inquiry-based guided learning is through project-based learning. We don't do, you know, design-based or problem-based. We really do focus on developing a deep understanding of content knowledge, collaborating within and beyond the classroom, tackling real-world questions, issues, and developing questioning. So then, again, we're getting better and better at that, so. And then credit trackers. We, this year, we created some really, really well-done credit trackers that are incredibly informative and really user-friendly for the students and staff. And so that's going to be huge in our ability to really have those conversations with students to get them to choose projects that are going to be the best for the needs that they have in terms of credits as they move through their high school career. The final thing I commented on was, there was a question about allowing a senior to enter and have a capstone option. We currently don't have that. We kind of piloted something with, with one particular student who is interested in trying it out. So kind of the process that we've come up with is, obviously, doing the tour, the shadow day, and then meeting with the Governance Council with a parent or guardian and kind of sharing their case and why they feel that their senior year should be spent at John Dewey. And so that's kind of where we're at with that, but nothing is, you know, solidified or installed.
The interesting piece with that, and it works both ways, is that students that come into John Dewey, and maybe they haven't spent all four years or five years there, because you can come in as an eighth grader, they're trying to figure out project-based learning. They're trying to earn the credits to graduate. And it may take them a year or two to really learn how to do project-based learning. And then they come to the realization that maybe that isn't the best environment for them. And so part of the balancing act is, how do we afford the kids the opportunity to try new learning environment? Provide them credits so that if they were to transfer back to one of our other four high schools, that they're not significantly credit deficient? Because we want to be a good steward for our students that are coming to us and through us in the district. And so at the end of the day, ultimately, it's the student's best interest that they, they take into mind in trying to put them in a position to be successful and gain that, that graduation. And that's oftentimes working with counselors at different schools and trying to find out is it going to be a good fit? You know, meeting with parents and advising parents as well. So I think their staff certainly invests the time in that and do the best they can to make sure that the parents know it's a good fit prior to them actually signing up and moving forward with that. So anything else, Molly? Any other questions that the Board of Education may have for us?
Thank you very much, Molly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
So they just, next steps, then, we will, if you looked at the, the beginning part, that John Dewey will have to do an action plan, and that's similar to their school improvement plan, so it's not a significant addition to. And then we will be back to the Board of Education when it comes for the renewal of, of the contract. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next discussion, the Head Start Program Guidelines and Operational Procedures and Selection Criteria. And we have Sally Dickinson coming to the table. And Ann Barnes. Not a problem.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Annually, we bring Head Start Program Guidelines to the Board for development and discussion. And as one of the six public school programs in the state, all Head Start staff are district employees and therefore follow all board policies and the handbook. The document that's being presented tonight is updated yearly to align with policies and federal regulations. And our purpose in bringing it to you is to have for your approval. And Sally is the expert, and she will be the one who will answer questions if you have.
Chris? I started reading through, and there's just really too much for me to do at one time there. Are there any changes that we should be aware of from what we had before in front of us?
The first section of eligibility, recruitment, selection, enrollment. There were some changes, federal changes, to that area of the program. We call it URSAY. It stands for Eligibility, Recruitment, Selection, Enrollment and Attendance. It didn't have any dramatic changes. We still have to create an eligibility status for every child that enrolls in Head Start. We still need to choose families, at least 90% of our children from low-income families. The federal government is now allowing, once we exhaust all low-income families, if there's a family that falls between 100 and 130% of the poverty guidelines, we're allowed to enroll them within that 90%. And then we're allowed 10% children that are over the income poverty guidelines. So other than the enrollment and eligibility, there weren't a lot of changes to the Head Start. We did add some of the, and reference some of the newer school board policies, such as, I know Field Trip was one that we updated in here. There's a section towards the back that we just reference the actual district policy. We don't rewrite it, or we don't put it into our own words. We just reference the district policy. There's been some changes with transportation, of returning children with the district. So we took the new district policy and we did tweak it a little bit to align with Head Start as far as the place that children are returned to if nobody's home at the end of their school day. Phone numbers, such things like that. We do have a few more transportation. We do have a few more transportation requirements as far as the five-point harness that every child is in, emergency cards. We have a bus monitor that rides every bus, so we updated the busing area. The health status is quite lengthy. There were no large changes, though, to the health status. So we did also update some of the job descriptions towards the end of the manual to align closer with the district job descriptions. Those are the ones that I think were the main.
If I may, in the future, Ann or whomever, sound like, if you have like a little narrative, just spelling out what the changes are, it doesn't have to be in detail, but just so we sort of know.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's very hard for me to read through all this, and it is, and from last year to this year, and say, oh, I see a change. Thank you.
We'll do that for next year.
We had a thought of, over the summer, putting it into sections similar to the district policies, so that when there's a change, it's just removing the old and inserting the new. And we could tab it and then provide an update next year to the Board as far as what the new pages were.
That's a good idea. Because it's ongoing, it's a work in progress, so it's. Our way audience. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to discuss the use of electronic surveillance technology on school bus policy. Melissa, are you joining?
I am, I vote. This is another in Terry's absence, too.
That's not a problem.
I'm on. I won't make it in. Go with me on this one either. We had an opportunity when we renewed the school bus contracts to have a really nice dialogue with our school bus carriers. And one of the areas that they brought to our attention that they thought would assist the carrier as well as the district is further clarification and guidance around the use of surveillance technology. And I don't even want to say cameras anymore, because we've gone away from videotapes to digital, and so we're trying to stay as up-to-date as we can in defining this policy, but in setting parameters and conditions around how those, that surveillance would be used and who has access to it and that sort of thing. And as we started looking into this, as you'll see, the next policy is the use of surveillance in the school district. I think the technology, again, it's very hard to keep up with in policy and laws and rules, and so we try and do our best, and this is a long time coming probably of having this policy in place. This is modeled after several other school board and school district policies that address this issue, as well as some nice input from the carriers and the Transportation Task Force.
Any questions or comments? Chris? You don't disappoint.
It would bother me if I did. In any event, I don't have it in front of me where, but there's a line in there that just sort of struck me under surveillance. Install a surveillance so the drivers can better focus on driving. So when I read that, does that mean the surveillance is going on? The bus driver is only driving the bus? And if there's a problem, there's somebody at headquarters that says, I'm surve, I'm watching the surveillance, and I see you've got a problem behind you. I, you know, I just, that's what it read to me, which obviously doesn't make any sense. So I don't know what that's about. I mean, are the drivers still not going to keep checking on the kids? I mean, what's the point with the surveillance?
I can't address that specifically, but what I can tell you is that many of the schools have actually bought, brought in the bus drivers as part of professional development opportunities, so that as we talk about management of classrooms or management, and it's not the same comparison, but management of classrooms, management of unstructured areas, we've attempted to bring in the bus drivers and the carriers to be part of that. So our expectation would be still that the bus driver is competent in managing the environment in the bus and not relying solely on a surveillance camera, and yet recognizing that it's a difficult balance in some respects to be doing both of them to the best of their abilities, so.
If you have a chance, go back and look at that particular line. I don't know whether it needs to be beefed up a little bit or something. I mean, I would see surveillance, you know, things go on behind you that you don't hear, and somebody reports that, well, then you can obviously go look at the film. I would assume that's the way a lot of it would be used, or.
So I just wanted to make sure I have the.
Verify or not.
The correct sentence. The Green Bay Public School District authorizes the use of electronic surveillance technology to record student conduct on school buses for the primary purpose of supporting student safety, including deterring of discipline problems, vandalism, or other illegal activities?
It's a second sentence.
Use of electronic surveillance.
So the driver can focus on driving.
Helps support the safety.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have had it.
It's a second line.
Sure.
Thank you.
First paragraph.
And I think the feedback from the carriers was that the surveillance is, it is to allow them to focus on driving the bus so that they are not, we get into a lot of he said, she said. And so it's rather than focusing on the exact details of what is going to be alleged, they can drive the bus. Of course, if it's a safety issue, the bus is pulled over and the safety issue is addressed. But I'll go back and make sure that's what the carriers had intended.
Mike?
I guess I would ask staff that looked at this policy and also the next one, I guess whether you think that these policies adequately address the privacy issue and whether privacy is adequately protected in these policies?
Student privacy?
Can you give a little bit more?
Well, I guess not only student, anyone who is surveilled. I mean, I, that's a concern of mine, that to make sure that in viewing, using the technology, and who gets to view it, and who is captured by the surveillance, whether we are adequately protecting, whether it's students, our staff, their privacy.
May I amplify that a little bit?
Sure.
Sure.
I could see where you have a situation that a parent calls the media that my little Johnny got picked out of Bullock, et cetera, et cetera. And the media knows that you have surveillance on buses, and then they would request of the bus company a copy of that surveillance. So I think that's part of your concern, at least it would be mine.
The policy does address that.
As to whether or not, you know, the bus company would turn that over, you know, whatever else. So we, I can't speak for the bus company unless I know for sure that they know those things.
I mean, I think surveillance is a double-edged sword. I just want to make sure that we have adequately thought that through and addressed those concerns.
To, and to where it is?
Yep, I know where it is. To address Chris's concern, the video is, is the school district's video. It is not the transportation company's video. All of those videos are pupil records, and the policy addresses that they would not be subject to media release. And in fact, the policy addresses if a parent had requested to see the video, the steps we would need to go through to allow the parent to view the video, because other students would be identified. The Family Privacy Compliance Office, which is the federal government agency that monitors FERPA, you want me to do that one, Katie? The Family Education Privacy Rights and Privacy Act.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's always a mouthful when it comes. They're very, they have finally issued guidance, but not, but not final guidance on videos and whether they constitute pupil records. The current holding from that office is that for a student that is subject to discipline, that then constitutes the student's pupil record. The other students in the video are considered extras, like you would consider in a movie. They're considered extras, it's not considered their video and their pupil record. But if there are two students fighting in a video, it's both of those students' pupil records. So a parent would have the right to view that video, but we would have to go through a number of measures to blur out all the other students in that video. If we can't do it, we can't have the parents view the video, because then we are violating a student's privacy rights. So again, it's putting definition on that, and that's what these policies do. The policies are very clear, they would not be subject to a media request and immediate release.
And a parent would not be given a copy of the video. They would sit in a room with a staff member to view the video.
That's what the policy requires.
That certainly makes me feel better, and helps me feel a little bit better here. Who physically has surveillance tapes? Is that coming down here or is it at the bus company? And if it's at the bus company, I just want to make sure they know everything you've just said, because I could see somebody in another organization not realizing that, letting it go.
We have them.
We have them.
We have them.
Just the district.
They're not tapes.
They're, they're digital recordings.
I understand.
There's a system, which you may have used, I know Mr. Dorf used a system that you can go into and you can view those recordings.
I'm familiar with that. I call it tape just as I call.
We wouldn't be the only ones to have access to that, not the bus companies.
I will confirm that.
Okay, it's because, to your point, that we can control what we let out, but we can't always control what they let out, so.
Well, I, to the first question about if it's available for viewing by the public, it's in the page break between the first and second page where it says the surveillance technology recording shall not be available for viewing by the public in general, employees in general, or the media. So it's, that's addressed right, right in there, and that's where you can find that.
Is this the same system on the bus that would be within the buildings?
That is, that is my, you know, without Terry here, I think that's my understanding.
We can get that confirmed, though, because that'll then answer Dr. Wagner's question.
Yeah, if that's the case, then you have to have special access to get.
Yeah, server set aside and access code and all of that, yep.
I guess, okay, going back to my, I just want to make sure that staff has thoroughly looked at this, because government hasn't done a very good job of protecting our privacy. And I just want to make sure that we're not doing something that intentionally or unintentionally goes down that path.
And I, to your question, Mike, I think because these are pupil records, there's an added level of protection and privacy around those records. Now, if it doesn't involve students, and for example, the Preble fire, that was caught on video, and that was not a pupil record, obviously, and we were able to release that to the media, that was simply surveillance video. But it, there's another layer of privacy and confidentiality rights when we're talking about students on videos. And I think really that would be the Board's, I would hope that's the Board's most concerning when we're looking at the surveillance video topic.
Is it specifically saying, or Melissa, that videos, the video recordings are pupil records? Have you described it?
I believe. If you could just give me a minute. In a second, in a second, I don't have a first one.
I think it's an important point, and the fact, when you said that, that answers a whole bunch of questions. I mean, if somebody calls me as a principal and starts asking questions about it, that really seals the deal, well, these are pupil records. And, you know, can't show you this anymore, they can show you the document to file.
I believe it's addressed in the second policy that we're going to talk about next, or we can talk about them together, I guess, but we can make that more clear in the 751. That's right. Yes, F. F in, F in Policy 824 addresses it, but we could probably take that out of that policy and put it into 751 as well. What was that?
I don't see it.
In 751, okay.
No.
We can add that. It does cross-reference, but I think it would be.
It cross-references it at the bottom. But it would be nice to have this brought out, I think.
Makes it very clear then.
Yep.
Right.
We will do that.
So if we decide that we want surveillance to be on a, on a school bus, which we don't own, then I'm presuming our request to put the surveillance camera on would be a request, but then the response would have to take into account how that would affect business relationships, I suppose? That's the, that's how we know that they're going to say yes to it, basically? Legally, let me rephrase it much better. Legally, we can't tell them this camera is going on that bus which we don't own, right?
If you give me just a minute, Andrew, I'm going to pull up the contract with the bus company, because I'm pretty sure it's addressed in the contract.
Okay, well, as long as it's either in there or would, we need to make sure it gets in there.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments on the bus surveillance? All right, then let's move on to the electronic surveillance technology in public areas of school buildings and district property policy.
Same introduction as the last policy, keep up with technology. And if you look at Paragraph F, I think this addresses the concern that Mr. Dorf had brought up on making sure that's clear as to the surveillance system constituting a pupil record. And then same procedures as to how the video would be viewed.
Does this include property we rent?
It does, if we've installed, so John Dewey, it would, and I think we have cameras.
Yes.
At John Dewey, yeah.
Enter.
The, the fact that a minor student can't view the recording, are you just, are you just mirroring FERPA language there? Which is, I think unfairly so strict that a student can't view their own pupil record. There are good, you know, there are good, there are good things about FERPA, but people should know that there are some real extreme cases in there. There's cases where legal guardians track, there are cases where legal guardians can't do pupil records when they've been a legal guardian for years. Didn't we have to, I've heard we've had to track down parents in jail to sign things because a legal guardian couldn't, it's so tight in some areas?
I can't speak to the scenario you're talking about, because I don't know the specifics, but, but under FERPA, pupil records are owned by parents until the student obtains the age of eighteen. And when a student obtains the age of eighteen, the presumption is it stays, the rights stay with the parent unless the student who's obtained the age of eighteen has revoked those parents' rights.
And it's not parent or legal guardian, it's parent, right?
It is parent or legal guardian, but the concept of what constitutes legal guardian is very different to many different people. So it has to be legal guardian and meet the definition of legal guardian.
So there are people, though, who have legal custody with court papers that still can't view that child's pupil records, at least sometimes.
I, I'm going to play a lawyer on TV, Andrew, and I'm going to say, I can't answer your question because I don't know the specifics around what those papers are and what those papers say. So there are certain circumstances when kids are in the care of an adult, and the care of the adult is not sufficient for FERPA purposes to have access to pupil records.
Care and control versus custody. Yeah, okay. I think, I mean, there's a couple of things I don't like, but they're mirroring FERPA, and it would be a problem if we didn't. I'm concerned about the, you know, the kid, we have a situation where maybe in one particular case, a parent might be better equipped to make a challenge of a video of a fight. And in another case, the parent might not be well-equipped to do that, and the kid could make their own defense there. This isn't one, I mean, this isn't one I'm going to, I'm going to go to the mat on. I'm just expressing a couple of concerns here.
I understand your concern. Unfortunately, we can't write board policy that's not consistent with the law, and we can't give, give additional rights that are not provided under the law. We don't get, FERPA is the area that addresses this, and we can't, we don't get to change that with board policy.
Does anything, does anything change if a criminal charge is filed? Do new people get? Do new people get access to it, or potentially, or not really? Or does, or is?
Yeah, if we get a subpoena for the video, we have to comply with the subpoena for the video.
Okay, so there, okay, then in certain extreme or special cases, there's things that can be done legally, maybe. Okay.
Okay. Ed?
First of all, I've experienced what you described, where somebody has custody of a child, but does not have legal guardianship, although they have custody and social services approved it, and we've had to go to jail or send somebody down to Chee to get papers signed, so that actually does happen. G1, just a question regarding minor students and providing due process to students during an investigation, does this mean that administrators can't show the kids, I'm a 16-year-old at East, and I just broke a window, and it got done videotape, I can't show them the videotape then? Am I reading too much into that?
That's a, that's a good question.
Because this, this doesn't even allow a minor student to view it with parents' consent.
Right.
Where parents can, with parents' consent, they could show the student other.
I don't think, I don't think that was the intent, so we will rephrase that to make sure that that is more clear.
Okay.
And how will you rephrase it, what would it say?
You're going to put me on the spot?
I'm sorry.
We better see if we can.
I think to what you're saying is that doesn't allow the administrator the opportunity to be able to complete or follow through with.
Well, that's what I'm reading in here, that's my question.
Yep.
Because it says minors may not do it, that means that I can't show, you know, Barbara, you know, we caught her breaking windows, I can't show the video evidence that we caught her.
Yeah.
I don't believe that was in the intent, and I
Okay, so we can.
We'll rephrase that, and we'll put it in the board update, so that you have the language ahead of time.
Yeah, okay.
But if, for whatever reason, a parent didn't consent, we would be stuck, because it's a pupil record, right?
Let me look into that to make sure.
I mean, I think, I think the principal should be able to do it, but if it's a pupil record, it's a pupil record, but parental consent should still let a student see the pupil.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
This is just first reading, it's supposed to be another.
Right.
No, we're not going to have second readings anymore.
Okay.
We were going to sometimes for big tickets.
For big ticket things, does this rise to the level of needing a second reading?
I don't know, does it? I didn't think so, but I wasn't the one who brought it up.
If the changes are made and put in our update?
The, we can make the changes, and if you're not comfortable with voting on it in the next meeting, you can table it for the, for the following meeting.
If Terry was involved, is Terry going to be at the board meeting, where she could maybe answer some of the questions that?
Are there any other questions that you have, that haven't been answered?
I have written down to verify the access to the videos on the buses, if the school bus company has access to that, and who owns those videos, and where those are centrally located, and then
The other one is my policy.
The other one is, is under
Is under my.
824.
Yeah. Okay.
If I were to offer, what I think we're, you're saying, Mike, is that, what are the assurances?
Right.
That protect the student? That's really all we're asking, and so there are, there are many places they push in, and so I think that that's the piece, if we can just provide that to the board in the update.
I guess I want privacy assurance.
Yes, yeah, and I can appreciate that, and I think everybody does, so.
So, we'll treat it as a first reading, discuss it again at the regular board meeting, and if it needs to be tabled, we can table it.
Okay.
Okay, but in the meantime, we'll get clarifications in the update.
Hey, I have a, there's, where is, where's staff privacy and protection here? And have we discussed it with any of our, our staff units? Well, you're saying that you, right, we're saying here that you can, we can film everywhere except the bathroom, the locker room, and the health room. Have we, have we talked to our staff about what, what that means?
I don't know, because I wasn't here when cameras were installed in the building, so I don't know what the conversation was when it was determined to install cameras in the buildings.
Right, but I'm, this policy opens the door to, this policy would authorize cameras to go a lot of places that they aren't right now.
Um, I think this, the, the cameras came first with no policy, and the policy is now being put in place after the cameras have already been installed.
So, this is happening now, this is clarifying, this is the policy.
Yes, but there's still, I don't want to raise unnecessary alarm here, but there's a whole lot of places that we don't have cameras, and I don't think we're expecting we would have cameras, but they are legal in this policy.
And they're legal right now as well.
In policy?
Absent, I mean, absent a policy, there, nothing prohibits us, except by statute in the locker rooms, the bathrooms, and the health room, to put cameras in other. I think really this policy puts clarification that it's, as to what the criteria would be for putting cameras in the buildings. If you look at 824, it talks about that.
Does it under A?
Under A.
Where they have no reasonable expectation of privacy.
It identifies the areas where cameras would be placed.
Which, which for all intents and purposes is, is everywhere, really, except the bathroom and the locker room. Everywhere that you're not going to be undressing, it's legal. If, and then, B, so what's, what's other public areas of districts, buildings, and grounds, when A already says you don't have an expectation of privacy anywhere but the bathroom? What's left, I mean, what's even left in B? We've said that surveillance is legal virtually everywhere, right?
That's just referencing the limited-term surveillance, right? That paragraph is just saying that we might put limited-term surveillance in areas where they aren't, don't exist now. That's how I read that.
Right.
Okay, but A, right, and, so A has, but A has said, in A, we've already said that everywhere that people don't undress or change, the cameras are authorized, period, end of story, right?
That, B could say, other public areas of district buildings and grounds that do not currently have a permanent camera may be subject to limited, right?
Yes.
That's the intent of that?
That's the intent of that.
I mean, you could add that if you wanted to make that more clear.
If, if that's the intent, I think that should be there, although that opens the door that if, if there could be a logical place for a new permanent camera to go, that would have to get a policy waiver. I don't want, that's not my intent.
Well, the teacher lounge.
I mean, that's a good example, because there could be theft occurring in the lounge.
Right, that they would want a limited term.
That might be the temporary.
Surveillance.
But that might already be, that may have already been authorized, I think I agree with it, but that may have been blanket authorized by A already.
Well, it is authorized, but we don't currently have a permanent camera, so if we want limited-term surveillance, we may put other cameras in other public area.
Or we could just put in a, we could just put in the permanent camera that's already been authorized in A.
We could.
So, I guess, I don't get, what does B do if A has already said we can put a camera anywhere but the bathroom?
I think what B does is, it gives you a savings in case somebody looks at A and says, okay, no reasonable expectation of privacy, but you delineated these places, entrances, hallways, commons, classrooms, gymnasiums, libraries, parking lots, athletic fields, playgrounds, and the exterior, but you didn't say the supply closet.
Or the teachers' lounge.
Or the teachers' lounge.
Right.
Or we had a situation in my previous school, we put outside of the restroom, because we were trying to figure out who was leaving the bomb threat, and the other camera did catch down the hall. We would normally put a camera there.
I think A is telling you where they are in general, and B is saying that there may be occasions when we have to put one someplace other than where it's, which might expect it.
Right.
Okay.
Just kind of a savings clause.
You're right, A didn't, A didn't authorize it in 99% of the places, it probably authorized it in 90, and then
Right.
There's the one that's forbidden, and then there is a little in-between.
Right.
Can I answer?
Mark.
I mean, there's other reasons, because it's expensive to install cameras. In one example, we had a building where there was some theft going on from someone outside the school who would bring a child in with him. For a while, we put more cameras in that building, so we could figure out when those thefts were going on, that we normally wouldn't have in an elementary building, caught the person who was doing it, took the cameras out, because they are expensive, so it, they may just be there on a limited term.
Okay.
I just want to make sure before we move on, that I have all your questions, and I know Mike has raised the issue of privacy. If there's anything specific that you are specifically, that you want us to look into, the issues on, for the bus transportation, that we can get those answered. Anything else?
I guess, I'm assuming our intent would be if the parent of an accused student wanted to see the video, that we would video mask and allow what's viewable to be viewable?
Yep.
It's very, it would be very strange, all recordings can be edited or altered to render other students unrecognizable. You might lose the subject too, but.
In most cases, yes. We can't rule out that 1% of cases where we wouldn't be able to do that. Lori has the technology to do it, and she would be our person who would be blurring faces to make them available to parents to view.
But if you gave, if you gave up seeing the, if you, if you covered up part of my face to give all of, you might lose some of your subject, but you could put a black square over half of the screen and still get something, right?
I can't speak to the, Lori knows the technology, I can't speak to the technology.
You have the ability to do, we've just not done it yet, so I'm not going to do this yet, so I could help.
Okay, I'm, I'm good there.
Okay. Anyone else have anything that we'll clarify in the update?
Thank you.
Thank you, and that concludes our work session.
All right, thanks, Katie. Thanks for moving to our organizational support work session, that'll be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
All right, for discussion items tonight, under business and finance, we have none. Under human resources, we have four items, the first one being the executive director of special education and pupil services job description.
Job description is brought to you because we have an additional area of pupil services.
To this director, executive director of special education, we wanted to bring the job description up to date.
Can I add something to you? Under education, director of special education and pupil services license needs to be added before you add. That position requires a DPI license.
Other question?
Yeah, I, I have several. I went through this job description, it's a very demanding, very rigorous, questions about how it was developed, who wrote it, and were the current executive directors of pupil services and special education present when this was developed?
The current executive.
Claudia and Barbara. I mean, were they consulted when this was developed?
I don't know. This is, this was actually a job description that existed previous to Claudia being hired. So, I think we just updated, it really captures both of those job descriptions put together.
Put some of the things that were in Barbara's job description into this one.
And things that were in Barbara's job description and Claudia's description previously, what things have been removed in combining them into one?
This job description, I believe, existed previous to the separation of the departments. So, this is the job description that existed, and then we updated it based on the education and the licensure that comes with it.
I just.
Is there something missing that you?
Well, I, I have the sense that doing this, combining these positions like this diminishes the role of both of the previous positions. I look at how administration, particularly in the downtown offices, has been expanded, and we've gone from three to five Level 2 administrators, that's the assistant superintendent level, we went from one executive director to three to supervise 35 principals, and now we're talking about adding two more, and now we're looking at having one person do two vital jobs, and I just know that as a principal, it was these two people that are two positions that I probably called upon more than any other positions down here for support, and I just, I think it's short-sighted. I don't understand how we can take two enormously important positions like that and combine them to one, and expect that everything that was supposed to have gotten done is going to get done.
But we added the director of special education and pupil services. So, there's a director that reports directly now to the executive director to help with those responsibilities.
Okay.
So, that, that job description, that's the chain of communication, or the chain, or whatever you want to call the organizational chart. That director of special education and pupil services reports and has that title to help with those responsibilities. That position didn't exist before, there was only a director of pupil services, so now there's that, and then underneath that are the associates. So, three associates report up to the director, the director reports up to the executive director. We didn't have that position before.
The day-to-day work of pupil services will be under the director as opposed to the executive director? Is that, and is the same true with the special education part of that director job?
The intent is for those associate directors to eventually report to that director, but for the time being, they will continue to report to the executive, executive director of special education until the new person gets in and gets acclimated, so they can put their focus into the pupil services. But it's one, you look at the organizational charts that exist, it's usually student services, which is special education, pupil services, all under one umbrella, and then under that is the support for those, for that overall department. So, that's the structure.
I don't, I don't dispute that this job description may have existed, but as other positions have come forward and are questioning them, I, I'm told that the nature of the work is changing so much that we need all these additional positions down here. Hasn't the, the work of pupil service and special ed also changed to the point that, you know?
It has, and we have, it has, and we have also an associate director now, Jennifer Higgs, who will be picking up some of those responsibilities. So, when again, you have your executive director over the umbrella, underneath is that director, now there's another associate director, and two special education associate directors, so three associates, one director, and one executive that oversees that whole area and department. So, it's just that the top person doesn't have all of those day-to-day responsibilities, because we should be able to get the work done with the positions that we have.
So, then if I were to look at the job descriptions, the actual job descriptions of what those two people are currently doing, I would find that in these new job descriptions, a lot of those responsibilities have been pulled down and distributed. Okay.
If I may ask with that, was there another position created under the executive director that wasn't there to help with this? Do we have the same number of positions, even though this one position has been modified?
We actually have more. So, there was an associate director in pupil services at one time, and now we brought that back to help with some of those day-to-day responsibilities. In addition, there is the director of both of these, so there's not just a director of pupil services or a director of special ed, one person is going to have oversight underneath that one umbrella. And there's an associate that used to exist that we brought back, and then the two associates in special ed.
And the associate we used to, that used to exist is Jennifer Higgs, position we're talking about?
we're talking about?
Other questions? Okay, then we'll move that forward. Next, we have the executive director of elementary education, executive director of secondary education job description.
This job description is also, is also new. I think the last that we could find was when we had our quadra structure. So some of the things that were in that job description are here, but Mark has updated it, so it really now reflects the work that the three individuals who will hold this role will be expected to do. Anything else, Mark?
So just a further comment around the position itself that Gina mentioned has come from that quad reader, the director of instructional programs. The piece to recognize with this position is that we were able to reallocate assignments. So as you know, Ann had picked up this year some supervision of elementary buildings along with educator effectiveness. So that's part of the administrative FTE that's there. Andrea currently is in this position and the job description is updated. The secondary portion of this was picked up when Terry was afforded the opportunity to go to human resources. So from an administrative position standpoint, that's the kind of movement of those positions. So the one position that is, I'm sorry. Is it, I want to make sure, is it the teaching and learning one or is it the executive director?
You're on the right one.
Okay. I got the wrong one on my screen. I apologize. I started to freak out. So, but the executive director of secondary schools is open. That one is not yet filled. And that one will be filled, quite frankly, only if we have a viable candidate. If we do not find somebody that can fulfill that role, we won't fill that position and the responsibility supervising secondary schools will stay with me. So we have interviews set up. No determination has been made yet on that and we're going to go through the process.
Other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I think that the piece that we are keeping in mind in the restructuring that went on has to do with central office transformation and the work that we've been doing to provide better supports to each and every one of the buildings. The work that we've been looking at is out of Washington University and it's also, we're being supported through models that we've looked at with consultants and so forth to make sure that the buildings have the supports that they need, that the central office transforms into being a very service-supporting provider. And I think that the piece that I've heard and had conversations around is even with the number of people supporting buildings, there is still a concern that it's too many. If you have soft touches, hard touches, or however that's put. So our goal, our goal is we look to create a nimble, flexible system that can be responsive to the legislation that keeps continuing to come our day, our way and to support schools the very best we can in teaching and learning is to do, to move down this road. And that's where, that's why it seems like there's an inordinate amount of change. It has a lot to do with workflow and streams of work. And when you look at even the pupil services, it is not to devalue the people that were there at all. And in fact, all that work is there and more, but it's to put it into a more cohesive collective design. And that's really what the research and the evidence would tell you will give us the greatest result. It'll help us differentiate in buildings. So that's our intention behind all this.
Okay. I'd like to follow up a couple of questions regarding that. Regarding the support to the buildings, how is that, how is that manifested or determined? Are these executive directors going to the principals and having conversations about what supports they need? Or is there an assumption that these are the supports you need and here's what we're here to give you?
No, it would be just the latter, that what do you need? I think one of the things that we've learned and the lessons learned, 70% of these positions are supposed to be with building principals in the buildings as opposed to be sitting in central office. And it is to be sitting side by side with the principals, problem solving, being part of a collective team, perhaps attending their building leadership teams, providing them the support so that they can leverage their work around teaching and learning.
So then it'd be a fair expectation that all the principals are being visited and being asked these questions?
Right now, we don't have this structure in place the way we'd like it to be.
I'll just give you an example for the secondary position. One of the things, we'll have sitting principals in on the interview team and one of the things that the sitting principals have been asked to do is identify what are their needs that they would then bring to the interview that ultimately would then shape the work that the supervisor would do to support the building principals. So that's one example of how that's started and I see that continuing throughout both elementary and secondary.
My second question then is about accountability. Is there shared accountability for results then for the people who are supporting principals? Specifically, if schools A, B, and C don't make the cut, whatever that cut comes out to be, is it going to be more than the principal who's going to be held accountable for that?
You know. Well, we talked a lot about, we talked about shared accountability. It's for every high expectation that you have, there's an equal or greater degree of support to get to that. And that's the premise that I will invoke as I work with the supervisors of the building. So all, new in the alignment will be all three supervisors will report to me, which will allow me then to be able to work with them on leadership development within a professional learning community. So that's an exciting opportunity that I don't think we've had consistently in our district. And so, you know, back to your question, I would have the same expectation for our supervisors that we would have for our principals. For every level of accountability, we're providing a greater or equal degree of support for them to be able to make that achievement or measure that we're trying to get to.
I'm not sure I got an answer to the question. I mean, are the executive directors held accountable to the measures that the principals were held accountable to?
Well, I'm not trying to dodge the question. I think there's a difference in how our educator effectiveness system is set up. Just quite frankly, the student achievement at a building is part of the principal evaluation. We've had talked internally about what is our evaluation system, central office? And I would say that once we get to that point, it will be the exact same. So we would look at the same measurement indicators and I would use those to supervise and evaluate the supervisors, just like we would our principals. Does that help?
That helps, thank you.
Yep.
If I may piggyback on that, I appreciate that concern. Another way of looking into the, I want to be careful of, if you have too many people responsible for something, then when things go south.
Nobody's accountable.
So I think there's a balance with.
Well, I, you know, I don't think the principals would ever want to dodge that accountability, but if my job is to provide support and then your school is failing, some of that has to come back on me.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I think what we've seen traditionally is that you get removed from that and you're shielded from that.
Yeah. I think that's fair. And I think that that's part of what Michelle's alluding to. How do we create a central office staff that understands what does it mean to support, to push, to pull, to transform? And then what, to what degree do we feel the responsibility in that as well? Because it's easy if you're away from students. I miss that part, but when you're away from students, you're not always reminded. So part of it is to be able to get these folks embedded within the building so that they, they have that connectivity. And that's even more going to push them towards that shared level of responsibility. It has to, in my humble opinion.
Calling myself from here. How many, as we're looking at some of these job descriptions, how many administrators above the principal, above the level of principal do we intend to have in the schools? And do we have some there now? It was a topic a long, long time ago if I remember.
I'm not sure I understand.
I'm not sure either.
You mean the levels of administration between the principal and say the superintendent?
Right.
Or how many?
Well, isn't, are we talking about that? About getting some of these higher, higher levels of administration to be stationed in buildings instead of down here?
Yeah. I wouldn't classify it as stationed in buildings. I would say they're, if you're to identify the percentage of the work that they do, a greater percentage of the work they need to do needs to be in and among with the people, with the building. And right now, I would say that we've not been as intentional about that, but I don't necessarily see it as an actual office in a particular school where our executive directors would be housed.
So the, the office would probably remain here, but the expectation of what percent of the time they would be in it versus not would change.
Absolutely.
I think that's, I guess I just mentioned that again because that too, I think, is something that was talked about and there was some head nodding a long time ago that it was a good idea and we're probably not there yet. So what's different, I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying what's different this time to make sure that that happens and that we let them get out there?
Yeah. Well, we have two former principals that are on the board and I think that they, that they could tell you their insights. It's a balancing act from a standpoint of, I know for me as a supervisor of secondary schools, I wanted to be there, but I also didn't want to be there too much because I didn't want any mixed messages or I didn't want them to think that I was looking over their shoulders. So how do you support them in a way where you're visible and you're present, you're building that trust and relationship, they see you as a resource, and they, and they feel comfortable asking you questions and being a thinking partner above and beyond maybe their current administrative staff? So certainly a balancing act.
To Ed's point about letting them tell you what assistance they need rather than go there with a formula.
But you're, you're looking at, I mean, but there's a change of mindset embedded in here that doesn't, that just, just these few minutes of conversation won't make that happen.
Yeah. Yep. Absolutely. It's a process.
Yeah. And I think that the piece that we're going to be working on is setting, just as schools have their improvement plans or success plans, we're having, we're putting together a district plan that aligns with, that supports. And I think that the piece that I go back to is from where I sit, what are my expectations now of, of these roles going in, which is different. I think that we have, in all honesty, been in reactive response mode for a fair amount of our work for a variety of reasons, but we are not getting the results that we need. Different, we are able to move forward somewhat, but to leverage those based on what evidence would tell you, we need to do this and we are going to do this. And that's our intention, to make it very purposeful.
All right. Anything else? All right. Then number three, executive director of teaching and learning, elementary slash executive director of teaching and learning, secondary job descriptions.
This is a change to the job description for two individuals whose responsibility has been focused a lot on curriculum. In your update, I indicated that the recommendation, which we'll ask you to vote on, that corresponds to this job description, is to move this job description up two pay grades and pay it at the level of what we consider an executive director. And this one, actually Mark also updated and we believe that it reflects the higher level of responsibility.
This is Nancy Schrader and Mike Free.
Yeah. And so with that recommendation, you will have those two individuals to vote on next at the board meeting.
Okay. Questions?
How are these folks going to interact with principals?
I would describe it, and this is how we've talked about it internally, is that the vision for elementary and secondary education is largely, it largely comes from the curriculum and instructional program that's established. Once that vision is established, then it becomes the supervisor's responsibility to work with the principals around the implementation aspect of it. There's still this depth of knowledge around, and we've talked about this before, when you talk about curriculum, what do we want our students to know and be able to do? That becomes their initial work to get our principals on board and recognizing that a principal's not going to know every single curriculum for every content area, but it's how do you build capacity around the curriculum with the principal? So a coaching approach, non-supervisory, they don't supervise the principals and we want to keep it that way. They're there as a resource for the principals. They're there as a person that can help problem solve internally, intervention as an example. So when things aren't working in a seventh grade literacy classroom, what are ways that they can help problem solve and create flexible options at the building level? So that's how I see them directly connecting and relating with the principals.
Okay.
The other part, I should say, I'm sorry, is the sense-making. Helping the principals make sense of, I think that there's a difference between an initiative and a mandate. A mandate is something that's self-imposed from the state where it's coming, we have to do it, and we may not like it, but we have to be able to layer it on top of something so it's not another thing or may, or put it into a bucket so that folks can comprehend it. That's another role that I see these folks playing. In particular, at the high school level, we've had a lot moving and just helping them support the acclamation and collaborative learning teams as well, helping them understand their curriculum. To think that a principal, as I alluded to, is going to know every single content area in their curriculum is just not realistic. So these people can help offset that piece. It's another area.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Move that forward. Then we have the accounting specialist job description.
This is a new job description that Ellen had worked on and we're bringing it forward now because it will, it will be a position that Patty Wolfshinsky will be recommended to fill and it's aligned with the same pay grade as an HR specialist. And Ellen, do you have anything to add?
Well, again, Patty has been doing this, this type of work for the last two or three years and does work on the budget for me. She does all of the federal claims and monitors them and works with all the people who are in charge of the claims and makes sure we spend every penny of those claims. And this is what she's already has been doing and this will be the title. She has a two-year degree in accounting as well. And it is the position that reports directly to me.
Okay. Anything else, any questions on that? Okay. Turning on, we'll move that forward and that concludes the organizational support work session.
Great, thank you Andrew. We do have a closed session, so read that motion. Closed session is scheduled for Monday, June 1st immediately following the adjournment of the work session meetings pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.8, page 1C, considering employment promotion compensation of any public employee over which the governmental body jurisdiction or exercises responsibility and pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.8, page 1F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations to wit, personnel matters. And pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.8, page 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit, potential contracts. The meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session so provided by law.
So moved.
Sandy?
Becker?
Hi.
Brenner?
Hi.
Bourne?
Hi.
Jeffrey?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Wagner?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi. Right, we'll go across the hall.
All right. How about plug all of you?
All right.